All right, we'll call the meeting in City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There's a quorum of City Council present. Everyone's here except Councilman Marshall, who is actually out of the country. And if you'll stand, our Missouri City Fire Department Honor Guard will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and post the colors.
Honor Guard, attention. Forward march.
About face.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Honor Guard, this is.
Thank you. All right, item three on the agenda is presentation and recognitions. There are none tonight. Item four, public comments. This is an opportunity for the general public to address counsel on anything that's not an agenda item. And Chris Allfree.
I am Secretary Chris Allfree, 3127 Glen Lakes Lane, Missouri City, Texas. Mayor, council members, I want to address open meetings and public hearings. I was at the last City Council meeting. There was supposed to be a public hearing on the sign ordinance. I was here with my wife and with another business member in order to discuss that sign ordinance. It was never opened up to the audience for discussion. I have two issues with that sign ordinance. One, my wife has a vehicle that's wrapped for Cartridge World. And two is, is we use human signs every so often when we have sales, and that ordinance bans those completely without allowing for them to be permitted or some way to do that. And I would ask the City Council to put that back onto the agenda and allow public comment before they vote on it. I understand part of it was taken off as it has to do with large vehicles, so it's going to come back up for another vote anyways. And I just think that would be fair to those people that were here, that were now allowed to talk, considering it is a public hearing and we are required to be heard by state law. I appreciate the council's time.
You bet. Thank you. All right, item five are staff reports. There are none. Item six is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? The consent agenda is printed.
Move to adopt.
Second. Councilman Smith made the motion. Councilman Wynn made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions, seven As, zoning public hearing, 7A1.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of an approximate 3.6 acre tract of land from CF Community Facilities District in Part and R4 Patio Cluster Residential District in Part to PD Plan Development District, describing said 3.68 acre tract of land regulating and restricting the development and use of property within such PD Plan Development District, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City, is adopted by ordinance number 0811 on January 19, 1981, is amended, repealing parts of ordinance 08421, adopted on April 2, 1984, repealing ordinance number 099, adopted on April 16, 1990, repealing all the ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a penalty, providing for severability and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
And this is the first of two readings.
This is the first of two readings. This is for Graceland Community Church, which has been in the church facility location on Lexington Boulevard for the past three years, and the church facility has been there since the early 1990s. The purpose of the application is to allow the church to add a childcare use in addition to all of the functions and services that they do. In addition, the creation of a PD for the site will bring the zoning for that site up to date so that the, any new construction, any new additions to the church site would be in conformance with our current architectural standards and landscaping standards.
Okay.
There are no deviations as part of this application. And also, I need to mention that because of the protests received, this application does require a supermajority vote of council in order for it to pass. And so that would be, five members of council would have to vote to approve.
Okay.
I believe that's six.
Okay.
I believe that supermajority is six.
It requires three fours and...
Of the members of council.
The members that are here.
So that's, of the members of the governing body, so that's over five rounding up to six.
I move to adopt.
Second.
The question that I have is that primarily the change that they wanted to do was add a childcare facility.
For this application, yes.
Which childcare is an SUP, as well as the existing SUP that they already have.
Childcare used to be a use that required a specific use permit. And now childcare in shopping centers or integrated business developments would require a PD, and childcare not in shopping centers or integrated business developments are uses by right in our commercial districts.
Well, this doesn't fall into either.
This doesn't fall in either.
But we've had churches who have childcare facilities in the past.
That is correct.
Okay, and, and I'm gonna support the fact that we're doing the PD, but I do think we need to put something in place that if we have an existing church in place and they want to add childcare, that the mechanism is there to do that, and it doesn't even really have to come back to council for that to happen. And I can understand why you're asking for the PD, but I also understand they could have done this without asking, based on the fact that they already had an SUP. So if we want to amend the SUP to include the childcare...
Right.
Okay, then I think that ought to be something we ought to be able to work out without even coming back to council, okay? And we've done things like that before. But in addition to that, I think we need to give them their $1,200 back, because I think that could have happened under the SUP. And I think primarily the PD pretty much brings them in line with the architectural standards.
It does, it does. And, and just to be clear on that, most of the other churches in the city that have SUPs or PDs, we usually list out those types of uses.
But I was here before we had PDs. And this would bring them in line with the other churches with the PDs.
This would bring a current to other facilities.
In regards to their zoning fees, if council wants to waive that amount, the $1,200 that you may mention of, council will need to take action on that.
And I'm amending, and I offer a motion amendment to waive the $1,200 fee.
Would you let me amend my motion? So I can...
Well, you made the motion, so you can't amend it. It has to be me.
He's gonna amend your motion.
You can accept it.
Set mine, okay.
You can accept it.
So that's okay with the motion?
Yes.
All right, with the second? Yeah? Okay. All right, there was a motion by Councilman Smith and a second by Councilman Ellen Cat with a amendment to it to waive the fee, so. You have that? Okay, we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got it? All right. And I know there were probably people here from the church, were there? You didn't need to speak, we took care of you. All right, item seven two, 7A2.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of an approximate 10.97 acre tract of land from R5 Townhouse Residential District to PD Plan Development District, describing said 10.97 acre tract of land regulating and restricting the development and use of property within such PD Plan Development District, referencing a site plan amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City, is adopted by ordinance number 0811 on January 19, 1981, is amended, repealing parts of ordinance number 08223, adopted on June 21, 1982, repealing all of the ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a penalty, providing for severability and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Yes, council persons, the applicants are here tonight to request rezoning of an approximate 11 acre tract of land from the current designation of R5 Townhouse Residential to Plan Development District for the uses of office, warehouse, and industrial complex. The site is actually located at the Old Tang City site, as we all are familiar with there. It's an approximate, as I said, almost 11 acre site. It will actually be split into two phases, one of the phases being two buildings that will be split up into smaller lease spaces to be sold off of approximately, I'm sorry, approximately 2,000 square feet each. The second phase, which will actually be to the west, will be approximately, two, four, six, eight, 10 buildings, in both 8,000 square foot and 6,000 square foot, for persons to come in and buy or lease for the development of small, medium-sized businesses. The elevation drawings are what you see before you here. It will be essentially brick and stone on the front and sides of the building. There are two deviations that have been requested by the applicant, those being, one, the use of metal on the rear of the buildings. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's request, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended to allow for that, but only in areas where it cannot be visible from the public right-of-way.
I understand.
The second deviation, and this is the other type of building, as you can see here, this is the longer style building. Here will be the, the smaller, more individual sized, individual type buildings. Here are some of the elevation drawings, just so you can get a quick glance at that.
They using the existing slabs that are still there?
No, there's nothing there.
Slabs were torn off, I couldn't remember.
From the site pictures here, what you see there is the roadway that connects through there, but there are no slabs or anything. It's right now completely vacant.
They took the slabs up, I guess.
It's a little bit further up where some of those concrete slabs are at and all that, yes, sir.
Okay.
The second deviation that the applicants are requesting is to use wood fencing in lieu of masonry fencing and type A screening, which is actually what would be required there to separate those two uses. Type A screening requiring both a 20-foot buffer yard essentially, and then a masonry wall with canopy trees. They're requesting and are showing the canopy trees, they have requested to use eight-foot high wood fencing instead of masonry fencing, and they are requesting to have a buffer yard depth of 12 feet instead of the 20-foot that the, that the ordinance would currently require. Staff has recommended to disapprove the use of wind fencing in lieu of masonry and to have that shorter buffer yard. However, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended to allow a buffer yard amendment of 12 feet with masonry fencing to help buffer from the two adjacent uses. The applicants are here tonight, if there's any questions the council may have for them.
Does that back in where the fences you're talking about, back up, but up to any subdivisions?
Yes, the subdivision back there, it does run along that, yes, sir.
And we've seen what wooden...
As you can see, this may help here somewhat.
We've seen what wooden fence had looked like in the last three years.
There is a section of the, basically the southeastern side of the property would be adjacent to residential, as well as the southwestern side, that smaller corner.
But it's not, it doesn't back up to both the estates?
No, not, well, there's a, on the side there, I believe that there are a few houses that would be adjacent to it.
But they back up to this property. They don't face the, the backside of this property.
Uh, they would, yes, they would, no, they would not face the backside, correct.
Yeah, so we're looking at that back, y'all, I just pointed, I was making.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. That's correct.
So that's the entire piece that you're talking about, eight foot?
I'm sorry.
That's the entire site, or just by the site, the eight foot?
Uh, it would be just along those areas that are actually adjacent to the residential, so we would be talking along the south, well, what, what here would be to the south and what would be to the, the west. However, the, well, there is a slight lessening of the requirements along the western side, because there is a detention pond that they're showing there, and at 40 feet in width or more, there's a lessening of the requirement, so they would just have to do wood fencing and, and trees instead of the masonry on that side.
Right. Do we know how much fencing we're talking about, linear feet?
I, off the top of my head, do not know that, sir.
What is that, site plan to scale?
Yes, sir.
That'd be pretty easy to figure out.
I unfortunately cannot read that one so well. Let me see what I can do here.
Was Mr. Wilson behind you now? Travis?
I'm sorry?
Would Mr. Wilson know behind you?
Yes. Oh, come on up. You having a, no, bit off the top of your head?
The what?
The linear distance of the southeastern border. Let's see. The one that we...
One that requires the fencing.
Right, the one that would be right adjacent to the residences there. We'll be looking at approximately, looks like...
It's 1,683 feet.
Yeah.
Of which, just a small portion toward the west end has maybe six or eight houses, and the rest of that subdivision has never been built in.
From that picture on the ortho map, it looks like it's about three houses.
So would the, would you consider something other than wood fencing?
Oh, yes, sir. We've already acquiesced to putting up a masonry fence.
Okay.
Yes, that, that was a swamp off for the 10 or 12 feet because the site's so narrow. Excuse me, I'm Davis Wilson, I'm the senior earth director at SDM. And we have already acquiesced doing pit roofs, metal roofs with the Texas Stars. We were also the architects on Rocky Creek.
Yeah, right.
And we brought home to Missouri City a second place in Landmark Award with it, but it will have the sloped metal canopies like what's on some of Rocky Creek with the Texas Star and the end zone, so that will replace the flat canopies I had there. I think that's, oh, yeah, and the engineering division, Scott and Jenny asked if we reuse the existing detention pond, detention pond, and we agreed to that. Is there anything else I missed?
I think that's pretty much got, got it.
And that the detention pond is also being used as a buffer?
Yes, yes, it will, it will serve multi-purposes. And there will be have to, you know, obviously some work will be have to done to get it back fully into shape and all that, but, yes, sir.
Oh, a lot of work.
Yeah.
I mean, this sucker's been sitting there.
It's been sitting there a while, hasn't it?
Been sitting there undeveloped for 25, 30 years.
Well, when you came along and told me it, it still has hope.
Sir?
It still has hope, now that I know that you're here.
All right, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Are any of the, are any of the people that signed letters of protest here?
May I speak to that moment, sir?
Yes, sir.
Uh, after, there were some people spoke during the planning and zoning meeting, and after the planning and zoning meeting, I met with them and passed out packages, and they, they then agreed that they didn't understand it, and they all agreed with it, and that's the reason they didn't show up. We kind of had a home over there.
Okay, well, you know, reading most of them, they figured their home values were gonna deteriorate, and I would say that anything like this that's built over there would increase their property values more than decrease it.
It's gonna increase it, and, and I'm sure that you're aware, sir, mayor, that they've had to put up cameras to try to deter the crime on those empty streets back in here and bumping and...
Now, wasn't there also, as a part of this, to change the name of one of the streets?
That's not ours.
There's a discussion of that, but that will come to a later date.
Okay.
That's the other last project.
Well, we support it.
That was the last project that came.
Okay.
Yes, they were, they were speaking on that. I believe they're all still working on that to bring forth a proposal for everybody.
Okay.
Keep in mind, this is the third project.
Yeah.
In less than four months. Yeah, and I move that we, you know, close the pub, public hearing, and do, do we need to amend to put in your recommendations, because they're not already included in the ordinance already?
They, they should have been included, the, well, the recommendations P&amp;Z made should be the ones that are reflected in there.
Yeah, because the fence is in there.
So I, I move that we approve the ordinance on first reading.
Okay. Mayor Protem Watt makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Councilman Emery. Is there any other discussion?
You know, I, I didn't know when I told the Suckin' Mile group Danny was there, that they may just be starting something down there. And this is the third project in less than four months.
Yeah. A whole lot better use than what it has been for a long, long time. Yes, a lot of things happening, good. And a motion and a second, all those in favor, motion carries. Thank you.
We appreciate it, sir. Will you be in trouble?
All right, Mr. Wilson, good to see you.
Good to be here.
Yeah.
Make it look like Rocky Creek.
Thank you, Travis.
Yeah, make it look like Rocky Creek, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All right, item 7B, republic hearings, there were none. Item eight are appointments.
Mr. Mayor and council, the items you have, I think in your cover sheet there details out the recommendations that came from the work session the council had in relation to the different boards and commissions and their appointments and renewals.
All right, do we need to take them separately?
It's not necessary if you're able to accomplish it all in one motion. If there are a significant number of changes, though, that might be challenging.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
As presented.
As presented. Okay. Councilman Ellen Cat made the motion, Councilman Smith made the second. There's no discussion, we'll vote all those in favor, motion carries. All that high-paid, free service we're getting there. Item nine are authorizations. 9A is consider authorizing award of a contract for guest and road irrigation construction. Adam Bobby's not here, we'll do this for him. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second. Councilman Smith made the motion, Councilman Wynn made the second. There's discussion, not, we'll vote all those in favor, motion carries. 9B is consider authorizing...
Mayor, if we could just make one mention, so if we bring this back to you one more time, you're not surprised?
Yes, in anticipation, did contact the next lowest bidder, landscape professionals, and at the time, they were not 100% sure whether or not they would be able to follow through the bid due to their own availability. I am waiting confirmation on that, so if that does not work out, the next bidder is at 50,000 even, and due to the timeframe that's passed, since the bids were open, we would need to rebid and would essentially come back to you with that in the future.
Okay.
There's also a 10,000 difference between the original bid and the second one.
Yes, approximately.
All right, we don't want to wait too long, we'd be dead, dead plants over there. All right, 9B is consider authorizing execution of agreement for lab testing services for the Eldorado Bridge reconstruction. Is there a motion? Mr. Emery?
The motion.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ellen Cat. Anything different on it?
No, sir.
Most, all those in favor, motion carries. Item 9C is consider authorizing execution of agreement for engineering services to develop a pedestrian and bicycle mobility plan.
Very excited about this.
Yeah.
This is a plan that we're hoping will help us take a step towards developing a mobility system that'll offer a wider variety of choices for people to get where they need to go with pedestrian and bicyclists in mind. You might recall, we did a bicycle and pedestrian plan that focused on the 1092 and Texas Parkway, Cartwright, Highway 6, roadways. We're looking to go more to the neighborhood level to identify the existing and needed networks for pedestrians and bicyclists, identify those gaps, and then propose improvements, whether they be sidewalk improvements or roadway improvements, and prioritize pending improvements based on the networks that we need.
And where's the money coming from?
This is CIP dollars that are left over, that we've accumulated left over from other projects that have come in under budget.
Okay.
And Kimblehorn is in the audience, if you do have questions specific to them.
Right, there are motion.
Make a motion.
Question.
Councilman Ellen Cat made the motion, Councilman Smith made the second. There's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, motion carries. 9D is consider awarding contract for construction of the Thompson Ferry reroute.
Yes, we opened six bids and found that Conrad Construction's apparently bidder, they bid 160 days on the project. What we're looking for is once, if council chooses to award tonight, we allow approximately two weeks for the contractor to supply their insurance and bonds, and from there, we go about scheduling the pre-con meeting and issue a notice of proceed. So with that, we see construction possibly starting late July, early August, and then completing January to February. The contractor is expected to focus on the drainage and paving improvements first, and then completing the signal, with the lead times for the signal poles being so long.
But that's, that alignment is just within Missouri City.
Correct.
Because the roadway is Thompson Ferry itself is not in the city limits. And, and, and so all we are paying for is the light, the intersection, and I assume we are building the road from turning...
Just prior to the levy, and Riverstone is going to be paying for 50% of the setup.
Yeah, that's what I want to get out, you know?
Yeah.
If I could also state, Mud 46 was the owner of the property, and they're doing a dedication of the right-of-way, so the city was not purchasing the right-of-way, and this helps us also alleviate issues that we have with vehicles exiting Paradise River, the roadway that is in the city limits, due to the great change at the levy crossing and the transition in that area. So it's kind of killing two birds with one stone, and it also, we've, we've gotten participation from the developer, Riverstone developer, and the Mud District as well.
Mayor and council, I've actually worked with Scott on this as, you know, Elkins School, there's a lot of traffic through there, and also for residents to exit through Paradise River onto Oilfield Road during those times, because it is right over at that bridge. So I think this is going to be a great addition and asset to those, for the traffic movement back there.
Robin, do you know, will this alleviate the concerns that our folks over in Colony Lakes have expressed about the speed of the traffic coming down Oilfield Road? And I think we were saying they were gonna put a, we were gonna put a stoplight there, I guess at Paradise, and that would should help with some of that.
Yes, this will be the signalized intersection.
So this could help with that.
Yeah, absolutely, and as Council, Councilmember Floyd had the other side of Oilfield Road and, and had several issues of speed, especially with trucks that's coming through there early in the morning hours and all that, having a light at that intersection would help tremendously. And also, not only the speeders, but also the cut-through traffic of coming in and out through the neighborhood.
Well, but with development of Riverstone to the south, this, this, this intersection should not easily met warrants, I'm sure, and particularly during the school hours, because I go through there every, been every morning going to Elkins, and the people on, and coming out of your side of the subdivision, they couldn't get out unless somebody let them out, they were not going to get out. And surprised we didn't have more wrecks, but, but this will alleviate that problem. And it will take care of the big trucks who clog up the traffic.
Absolutely.
You know, making that left turn on Thompson Ferry.
Well, I just want to give you a solution to the problem that you're gonna inherit, that's all.
But you did a good job, because I think you, I think y'all solved this problem.
Well, actually, Councilmember Kalaya passed on to you, and now you're passing on to me. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Scott, I know that Steve, as he wrote a letter, Chad wrote a letter on Conrad, do we know anything about Conrad Construction? Ever done any work for us?
I'm here with Conrad Construction.
Oh, okay.
The man who got construction paranoid.
After that, City Council?
My name is Brian Connor Adam with Connor Adam.
My name is Brian Connor Adam with Conrad Construction, and we've been in business for 28 years. We do a lot of work with City of Houston, Harris County, all the surrounding areas. So this is a real simple project for us, we've done up to $12 million.
I'm a little gun-shy on low bidders right now.
No, we've been around for a while, and this is a real simple one for us. We're, we're used to doing much bigger projects, so this one's a breeze.
I'm going to ask questions now, you know? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Who made the second?
I did.
Mr. Emery? All right, inter motion and a second, all those in favor, motion carries. Item 9E is consider awarding a contract for the construction of a new pavilion in Hunter's Trail Park. Who's got that, Randy? I know Mr. Smith's going to jump all over it.
I was surprised he did it.
Huh?
I got to...
This is, this is about a plan that we've had for a year or so to utilize some CDBG dollars to build a picnic pavilion at Hunter's Trail Park. With the approval of that from the CDBG council, we ended up with around $23,000 of CDBG funds to do that project. When we got the, the estimates for the pavilion construction plans, it came up around 29, 28,900. So we're proposing that we use, utilize the other funds out of the CIP funds to complete that project, so.
I move to adopt.
Second. All right, Councilman Smith made the motion, Councilman Nguyen made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. You got that, Charles? But now we get into the, now we get into your item, Charles. Item 9F, consider award of a contract for fuel for the city's vehicle fleet.
Mayor and council, this item is to actually enter into a fuel contract on, directly, the city will enter into a contract on its own. In years past, we've always utilized cooperative contracts, either with Fort Ben County or most recently with the Cooperative Purchasing Network. This time, we, after our last contractor went out of business, we decided to go out for bids on our own, came back with several bids, we did a little analysis based on some estimated gallonage for unleaded, regular unleaded, the ultra-low sulfur diesel, and then the off-road diesel, taking the OPUS discounts that will come off of whatever the market, rack market price is for the fuel. Did some calculations, the low bidder, based on those calculations, is a company called Petroleum Traders Corporation out of Fort Wayne, Indiana. They do not have a, they're not based locally, they would distribute out of the racks here locally. The second low bidder was a company called Apache Oil, Houston Pasadena Apache Oil. We've used them extensively over the years in some, I guess you could call it emergency type situations, and they've served us quite well. We're very familiar with them, being as the specifications were written to allow for best value evaluation. Staff recommends that we go with the second low bidder, Houston Pasadena Apache Oil.
Makes sense.
Move to the...
Mayor Protem Wyatt made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Emery. There's no other discussion, we'll vote all those...
Let me ask one discussion. You say we couldn't use some of the co-ops that we had used through the county to, to secure our...
What I had stated, that we have done that in the past. We elected this time to actually go out for bids on our own. I've talked with some of the co-ops, getting some advice from them, and their recommendation, or like from, from the one advisor I talked to, would be go ahead and go out for bids on your own, see what you can get, and if you're happy with the contract or you can select, I'd recommend going with that. Most of the co-ops end up with a out-of-state provider, and there's a certain, I guess, comfort factor in there that we feel we didn't have, and by going with someone that's based locally here, that we felt that maybe would work out the best, especially in an emergency situation, hurricane situation, things of that nature. And we've had a lot of interesting projects, like when we've had to do the tank testing for the golf course tanks and things of that nature, and when, and when, actually, when our last contractor went out of business and we were left looking for someone to supply, Apache stepped up and immediately picked up the business and served us very well, and I know our fleet superintendent and Scott and them are very pleased with their performance. So we decided to go with the results we received on this bid.
Very good. Inter motion and a second, all those in favor, motion carries. Item 10, ordinances, there are no ordinances. Item 11 is a resolution 11A.
A resolution of City Council, the City of Missouri City, Texas, adopting a schedule of fees pertaining to the use of the Missouri City Recreation and Tennis Center, the Missouri City Community Center Auditorium, and certain farce grounds, facilities, and amenities, providing an effective debt and providing for refuel.
Move to the...
Second.
Our two tennis players jumped all over that, didn't they?
Darned to play the winner of Priscilla and...
It's not the winner, it's called the Survivor.
Survivor?
The last standing survivor. Inter motion and a second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item 12, or City Council announcements. The only announcement I have is, you know, for people that are not familiar, fact that we're going to have a July 4th celebration, July 4th, in Buffalo Run Park, starting at 6 o'clock, fireworks at 9:15. Outstanding display of fireworks again this year, and I invite everyone out to participate. There are going to be activities in the park for everyone, there's food, vendors, there's games, there's all kinds of activities out there. We promise the mosquitoes won't be too bad, it's not going to rain, I hope, and we'll be there. The other thing is that, at least Danny and I were here this week, and if you, we're out in the hall earlier, that big drum cover that's out there and that's framed, I don't, you probably know what that's, what that was, but that's what that is, it's a drumhead. We had a delegation from Vietnam that was here this week, and I signed a memorandum of understanding for us to establish relationships with the people in Vietnam to try to hopefully generate some business. And thanks to Danny and his visit there earlier this year, and his relationship with, obviously, the Council General and that delegation, and I'll let Danny speak a little more about that, but it was a good start for us.
It was a great turnout, and we appreciate the staff for coordinating the event. It wasn't very successful.
But it's, hopefully, we'll...
Now, the question is, where are we going to place that?
I don't know, we'll hang it somewhere.
We're going to have some new facilities here in Littlewood also.
Beautiful presentation they brought from Vietnam for us, so.
Well, I'd like to wish the mayor a happy birthday Saturday.
And I got to wish Jerry a happy birthday. We share, we share almost same birthdays, and then as of yesterday, I retired and as, from my bank, and this week, the end of this week, Jerry will retire from his hospital job, so we join the retired ranks along with these other two older guys that are up here. I'm not going to point them out, but...
Yeah, well, I can say it's welcome.
Yeah, but anyway, I hope everybody has a great holiday.
The two of us working, Robin.
And keep working because we need your money going into our social security.
Don't quit today, Joe.
Yeah, don't quit today, Joe, because we need your money, so.
Get those kids out there working too, so.
Have a safe holiday, and join us on the horse, it's going to be great, so thank you all.